My name is Jerry Miro. I'm a resident and owner. I'm from Philadelphia. I live here now. This is my home. I have a business background. I had a business for 30 years until I sold it in 94. I was a little involved in real estate and then I invested in real estate during my business career. But I'm a private person. You don't see anybody up here with me. And nobody's been involved really with this except my friend Denise who's been helping me. Came all the way from France to help me, which was nice. I'm not associated with any side. I've spoken to Scott. I've spoken to George. I've spoken to Gloria. After a fashion, I've spoken to Joe. And I'm strictly speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for anybody. And hopefully, I don't need to do too much speaking. I got involved with going to board meetings. And I found it interesting. I got here in 99, I think, when Mr. Samuels was president and running things here. And he was very good to me. I really found him helpful. Have a seat, Mr. Richmond. And I'm a little innocent when it comes to politics. I'm a businessman. I'm not a politician. And they're not really related, I'm finding out. But I've been more and more involved in the community as time has gone by. And this last year, I got more involved than I thought that I would. When I left, just before I left in the springtime, I had my first town hall meeting. And some of you were there. We were addressing issues that involved the big assessment that we got. And we were trying to, I was trying to just give out my feeling on those things. And I tried to stay in touch with what was going on because, as I said, I'm only here for six months. So I established a little group of four people. And one more or less inside the board, one outside the board. And then I was involved with George, our maintenance man. And then one other person that I had a lot of confidence in from a business point of view. And I was getting information from them while I was away, and I was paying for it. I'd invested about $6,000 over the last six months while I was away. George was nice enough to donate his funds along with some additional funds for me for that lovely fountain that you see in the front as you enter. It didn't come from anybody's pocket, just because of George and what George felt. And I felt also that we ought to give the credit that was due to Christine for all the work that she's done over the years. I've seen her on her hands and knees many times doing the planting. So it's a testimonial to her. Anyway, I was away. I was getting information. Steve Serkin, who was nicely recommended by Phoebe from the board, was keeping me posted as to what was happening on the board. And Kim, my friend who helps me with my mail when I'm away, was keeping me posted on what was going on on the outside. And I was interested. Anyway, I came back and then started to get involved myself. And just before I left, I had the pleasure of going to some of the board meetings where our new manager, our former new manager, was involved, Brian Sadler. And I was impressed with Brian, and we struck up a relationship. And I found that he was responsive to my questions. And I found that he was very willing to listen to the audience at board meetings, where in the past, often, we were relegated to the end of the meeting with good welfare. And we really didn't have the opportunity that he was willing to afford us during the meeting. So I liked his style, and I liked working with him. Now, there are some issues that I thought were worth taking the time to address in an open forum, but we don't really have an opportunity to get back and forth discussion. And I certainly am no expert in any of this stuff. I'm just trying to give the opportunity for information to be shared. And the three topics that I was interested in sharing and finding out more, and we have some board members here. I think I saw Gloria here earlier. Gloria, are you here?
She's over there.
Oh, there. You're hiding, Gloria.
No, I'm staying in the door.
Okay. That may be why. And I see some other board members here that might be able to give us information where they have the freedom to speak because it's not an official board meeting. The three topics that I wanted to air, the first one, I don't think has been adequately aired, and that is the removal, the firing, the defunctory firing of Brian Sadler, our property manager. The second subject was, I changed the order. The second subject is not the recall. It's the third subject. The second subject is the loan. Is that a new member here? The loan, just to discuss that. I was planning, or I thought that I had, Brian coming tonight. I had lunch with Brian today, and Brian assured me that he was coming. And we were discussing matters that would be appropriate to bring up. However, at 6:30 this evening, Brian called me to tell me that his superiors, Nancy and Nancy's boss, forbid him to come. So I can only try to share with you what I would have preferred Brian, because I like information to come from primary sources and not from secondary sources. But I do assure you that I had lunch with Brian. It's not a figment of my imagination, and I will try to share with you what I can. But something that I do have that is in Brian's own words is his letter to the board talking about his dismissal. And I'm going to take a moment to read it if you don't mind. Do you have any objection to that?
No, but I think the baby should be taken out.
Yeah, do you mind, ma'am? Well, you do, but if it's going to cause a problem. If you can do that, if you can keep him under control, that's fine. But we'll leave it to your judgment, okay? If you find it's a disturbance, then you can take him out. It's not, we're happy to have him. We really are. That's it. Maybe to get closer to the door, you'll be able to get out quicker. Anyway, here is the...
They need babies here.
Yeah, we do. We need, we need, I see a lot of the same faces. We need young ladies like that here, and I'd hate to see her leave. Here it is. Dear Board, I am dismayed at the manner in which my services as your property manager were dismissed earlier today. I know that some of you were not consulted before the decision was made, meaning the board members. This is a letter to the board members, not to us, not to the general public here. I'm not surprised, just disappointed. When you hired me to become your property manager last April, it was with the understanding that we worked together for two years. This was the commitment that you asked of me, and this is what I agreed to. The fact that I was dismissed without so much as an opportunity to answer any charges against me is disheartening. I was asked to do a very difficult job, one that I feel I did as best I could, given the obstacles placed in my path. It's important that the facts of the past 24 hours be disclosed to all parties so that each of you know what happened. At approximately 4:55 PM yesterday, and I believe we're talking about Tuesday, I believe it's Tuesday, I think Monday, Tuesday was, pardon me. I don't have the date here, and I wasn't there. So it was a day, it was a day before Brian was fired. Whatever, I think it was a Monday, and Brian was fired on Tuesday. At approximately 4:55 PM yesterday, I went to Brad's office. He and Clive were behind closed doors. I knocked and opened the door to see Clive holding several compact computer disks. Brad stated that they were downloading pictures from the computer, although I did not see any images on the computer screen, and I now suspect that other business was at hand. I told Brad that the three new members of the board were closely reviewing his work. He told me that Joe Garrity, and I understand Joe Garrity is a lawyer that's representing us in the Pegasus case, correct me if I'm wrong. I understood, he told me that Joe Garrity had called a meeting with him for 10:00 AM today. Today was the Tuesday, and that he was requested to bring his computer to the meeting. I told Brad that under no circumstances was the association's computer to leave the premises. I told Brad in Clive's presence that I had an external hard drive that any data could be downloaded to so that he could take the information to Mr. Garrity. Brad seemed content to leave it at that. Brad made a comment to me that they did not want Scott, Paul, or Stuart to get their hands on the information contained within the computer. I told Brad that I would be back in the morning, and we could transfer all the data to his computer, to the external hard drive, and he could take it to Garrity's office for his meeting. I left the property at 5:00 PM with Brad and Clive still in Brad's office. On my drive home, I called Gloria and informed her of what I discovered. Gloria told me that she knew nothing of Brad's meeting with Garrity and agreed that the computer should not leave the property. I have subsequently checked that information with Gloria, and Gloria acknowledged that Brian did call her. I arrived at work this morning at 9:00 AM. Brad and I entered his office together, and I began setting up the external hard drive. I also brought a stack of blank compact disks. I searched Brad's computer and noticed several things, strange things. The operating system was Windows Vista. I had never used Windows Vista before today. I checked the programs on the computer and found that Microsoft Word was missing. This was strange. All the other Microsoft Office programs were present, only Word was missing. Only one document was present on the C drive, a clearance report from HEI. I think that's our mold company. I attempted to copy this report to a blank disk. When I opened the disk drive, the disk was already in place. I did not check to see what was on the disk, a mistake on my part. I also noticed that several external drives were listed on the screen. This is strange, as a normal computer has a C drive and then usually a CD drive and a DVD drive. There were about five other drives listed. I checked each drive and found that they contained no data. There was another drive named Recovery. That had a significant amount of gigabytes used on it. I tried to access it, but it was unable. I made the comment to Brad that there was no data on the computer. He told me he and Clive left his office shortly after I did and asked who else had a key. I replied that only he and I did, as far as I knew. For the record, Brad's office key is a very common one and could be copied in any home improvement store. I went back to my office, leaving the hard drive and the disks in Brad's office, and wrote a memo to the board regarding this issue. I made a phone call to a computer specialist and inquired if he had the ability to retrieve the missing files. He felt confident that he could. I emailed the message I wrote of this discovery to the board and asked for direction. At about 12:00 noon today, it's the same day, he arrived at 9:00, this is 12:00 noon, I was dismissed by Gloria Gershka and Marvin Toh without proper explanation. A mention was made, I think, by Marvin about the data on Brian's computer. Two of Lauderhill Police Officers, two city of Lauderhill Police Officers were present to escort me from the property. I collected my personal items under the supervision of Nancy Robertson, removed my barcode decal in front of Gloria, surrendered my keys, and left the property. I do not understand why this occurred. I had many questions. I told Gloria to call me should any questions arrive. I appreciate the courtesy of knowing who the majority of the board was that supported the decision to dismiss me. That's his letter that he wrote, and that's a troubling letter. I'm troubled by it. I think you should be troubled by it. I was an employer for 30 years, and I never, in those 30 years, dismissed somebody like that unless I caught them stealing or something on that level. And I think the board owes us an explanation for that type of behavior. As I say, Brian was coming tonight so that he'd be here to confront the people, but I understand that the management company felt they wanted to keep our account and felt that that might be, and I understand that position, that might be not the wisest thing to do. So I was disheartened at the last minute, knowing that my deep throat wasn't going to be here. But at the same time, we do have the board members here. And if any of the board members would like to speak to this issue, because they haven't done it from, at a board meeting, I thought that's something they should bring up before they introduced the new property manager. We should know what happened to Brian, and that was just given a brush-off, and we were introduced to the new person. And Brian is, you know, Brian is satisfied. We don't have to feel sorry for Brian. Brian's a professional. Brian is not really working for us. Brian is working for Continental, and Brian is already working somewhere else, right now on a part-time basis, but he has, he's being interviewed for something that's longer. So Brian's not going to get lost, and we don't have to feel sorry for him. We have to understand how our board operates. And I like to see a board operate up front. And this is not, this type of behavior is not acceptable to me. I don't know if it's acceptable to you, but it's not acceptable to me. So I'm asking, I'm asking, giving, let's say, the opportunity of any board members to speak up and let us know why something like this could happen and what the real reason was for firing Brian. It sounds like Brian was doing his job, was protecting our records from disappearing. And we fired him, and then the records disappeared, left the premise. Does anybody want to say anything?
I have a question. Did you invite Brad to refute this statement?
I didn't invite Brad. Brad is not an owner here.
The whole thing was between Brad and Brian.
That's not the case. That's not the case. We had Brian, we had Clive, and we had Brad, okay? Clive is here, if he wants to say something. And then we have other board members. I know that Gloria is privy to the information. I've talked to Gloria, and, you know, Gloria has told me, okay? Gloria has told me that she made a mistake. Gloria told me that... Yeah, okay. Gloria!
Please come in.
Gloria!
Microphone. Come on down.
You want to set the... Going to three or four?
Did you go on the front and go in front of everybody?
He's like a chipmunk. He was like a six-year-old.
[laughing]
Backside only.
I didn't like that. I don't want to be in there either.
I did not say it was a mistake. What I said was, I would have preferred it be done elsewhere. But Joe is here, and perhaps Joe would like to say what precipitated it.
What I know, I was over in the attorney's office at the time. I've been told by Gloria that she's been talking to Nancy for the last several months about performance issues with Brian. I only know about the computer, that yes, they were copying pictures to give to the attorney. And then when Brian was seen in there, and Brad, from what I understand, has a little bit different version than Brian, but he's not here to defend himself. So I guess that would be the normal case of things. There's two sides to every story. But at that point, the attorney immediately, and I'll defer to Clive, because Clive was here, deferred to Clive and gave him a verbal to take that computer out.
Excuse me. No, Joe, I would like you to tell everybody what you said to me on the phone.
What did I say to you on the phone?
That he was destroying the...
No. I said, he said there wasn't any files there, so I said he must have destroyed the files by hooking up a Maxter drive. Now Brad called me up, and I'm only getting the information from Brad, Gloria, because I wasn't here. Brad told me that after he got on a computer and Brian had left, that all the files were gone. So I told him what to do to get all the files back, and all the files came back. That's the plain story of it. I don't know what else to say. So I called, USP called the attorney, I called Garrity, and the attorney wanted the computer. Now the computer, I will say this, the computer was always bought with the intent to go over to the attorney's office and stay over there through our case, because we are in the middle of a big lawsuit worth millions and millions of dollars. So I'm just doing what the attorney told us to do. Now he gave Clive a verbal, Clive can comment, and then subsequently, sent an email to you, Gloria, requesting the computer. So that's where we're at. I told you that if those files were gone, somebody, somebody, somebody destroyed the files, because Brad said when he left the night before, they were on. Now we've had break-ins to the office, okay? We had, we had a camera, we had a camera taken. Oh, now if you're going to get that way, you want to hear it. That's why we're here.
Well, how about if Clive says something too, since he was there?
Police recorded in one record that a camera was taken and some files of Brad's was taken. That was, that was months ago, a long time ago. So I'm only doing what the attorney said to do. That's the information I relay. Clive can speak to the verbal he got, but we do have an email that the board has, or several people on the board has, I should all have it, that he wanted the computer. Now you can talk to Paul too, because Paul was over there with Scott and Stuart on Monday, and I believe, from what Paul's told me, that they all agreed that the computer should be over at the attorney's office. Now to wrap up this case, Brad is scheduled to work at the attorney's office, what, two to three to five days to finish putting everything together. Now I'll give it over to Clive, because he was the one that was actively involved, okay? On the phone with the attorney.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Neil.
Folks, it doesn't make any difference whether you're here or there, you hear the voices, just try to give him the opportunity to communicate to us, okay? Without a lot of background noise.
Is everybody listening? With open minds? Why is it quiet? You know, we're here to tell you what happened, not what you assumed happened. There was no hidden motive. These facts are real. When Hector Lopez was let go from Continental, Gloria and I were sitting in the office. As we were sitting opposite from him, and I'm sure Gloria will back me up on this. He picked up on why we were in that office. He sat there, looked at me and Gloria, and he deleted files from his computer while we were sat there watching him. We didn't know what he was doing until after it was done. Now this is the reasoning behind a little bit of something why we inquired of the attorney. We had a situation here where Brad was requesting to copy files. We were in his office doing that. Brian walked in about 5:00, 5:00. And I had four or five CDs in my hand. We tried to download the file, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do that. Now this is a Vista program. This is all true. This is a Vista program. I had never used Vista before. Brad wasn't very up to speed on what it was. And I understand, based on an email that I seen from Brian, that Brian didn't know anything squat about Vista either. So he really did not know what he was doing on that computer. I received a call from Brad indicating that all the files on his computer had disappeared. This is where I'm coming from. All the files on my computer have been erased. I said, okay, I will be down there in about five minutes. I went down there, and sitting at the side of Brad's computer is a Maxter hard drive, which I understand from Brad, that Brian had tried to download the files. At this point in time, we weren't quite sure what had happened, but if Brad had said all those files were gone, this is not good for the village, having experienced what we experienced with Hector. So my first phone call was to the attorney. And I said, Joe, we have a situation where a computer that's been used specifically by Brad specifically for material for our lawsuit has files that are deleted. And he said, I want that computer. Bring it to me. That's how it came to be. The attorney, Joe Garrity, said, I want that computer. Bring it to me. Hence, we took the computer to his office. It's as simple as that. Those are the facts. Believe it or not. You can fit this together however you want, but those are the facts.
Clive, I'm just trying to understand. According to Brian's letter, there are two days involved, okay? There was one day, late in the day, when you and Brad were working on the computer.
I just mentioned that.
And he walked in. And you took the computer out the next day, according to the...
Correct.
And we're talking about two separate days.
Two separate days.
My, my, the subject matter is Brian's dismissal. To me, if Brian advised you not to take it out of the office, and he'll see you tomorrow, and then he called Gloria to tell, report what happened, you know? He walked in on you, and you guys were at the computer, and you wanted to take the computer. He said you couldn't take the computer, and he'd see you tomorrow and let you download the information. Okay? So to me, Brian has done the right thing. He has let the world know, other than just you and Brad...
Nobody's questioning.
Right. Wait, 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 wait. Nobody's questioning. He's fired. The man is fired. And the man was fired, I'm assuming, you're saying because he wiped off the computer? Is that the reason? I'm trying to get to the reason.
I, I, I couldn't...
You're the board member, one of the board members who fired him. So what was the basis for the firing?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
You're one of the ones who fired him, and you don't have an answer as to why he was fired? Is that what you're saying? That's what it sounded like you said.
It's my understanding that with job performance...
Well, wait a second. Wait, as I said, I was an employer. Job performance is something that you need to document. You have to have letters. It's over a period of time. You don't fire someone like this because of job performance. You do fire...
Well, I didn't know it was a trial.
Wait, 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 wait. I want to say, I should say that, I, okay? I would.
Let me ask you something now. Hey, Chris, I have something to say, but I want to ask them now. You have a video, you have a video camera here. This is almost like a trial. If you want to have a trial, then we should have had an attorney. The town hall made it.
Gloria, Gloria, I love you, Gloria, but these are your neighbors. These are people that can name things like you. You don't need, you rarely need an attorney if you're talking the truth. You only need... You only need an attorney if you're not talking the truth.
I would like to know why, where is this going?